We call to order, everyone stand for the flag salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman, let the record reflect Mayor Holtzman is absent.
Before we start tonight, I'd like to have a pause for a moment of silence for Bill Tate. He was on our school board, this is gonna be hard, knew this was gonna be hard. Also Maria Mento's husband, for thirty years. He was a good Ventnor resident and a great gentleman. So I'd like to pause now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We don't have any presentations tonight. Department heads, Ernie, I see you here, do you have anything for us?
Okay.
Ed, you got anything?
No, I'm going to go through some of these.
Okay, and we'll hit those as we go through them. Alright. Capital discussion, I don't think we're doing that tonight. So the following items are scheduled for action tonight at the regular portion of this meeting. We'll approve the minutes from our October tenth, twenty-fourth regular meetings and the November fourteenth regular meeting. We have no ordinance introductions. We have one public hearing on ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-two. Excuse me. And this is the authorizing the purchase of sixty-five ten to twelve Ventnor Avenue in the city of Ventnor. We're now going through some of the due diligence on that.
Due diligence, correct.
And that'll be finished up hopefully soon and we can move forward with that. Just for the record, this was the property that was damaged by fire and ultimately demolished this past summer. We will adopt several resolutions by consent. We have some contracts as well. Resolutions twenty nineteen, three seven two through three ninety-two will adopt as by consent. And the first one is, let's see, refund of water and sewer overpayment. For, let's see, they have the address in here? Nah, it's just by block and lot. Oh, there it is, one seventeen North Suffolk Avenue. There was an overpayment of a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Trying to get my mouse to work here. Resolution twenty nineteen, three seventy-three is authorizing refund of a tax overpayment for seven sixteen North Dorset Avenue. Amount of one ninety-eight ninety-four. Oh, too fast. Next resolution is three seventy-four. And that is a street opening hardship permit for block forty-three, lot eight, one oh two South Washington Avenue. For Jerry and Joan Combe, they came before us, I think, last month?
Yes.
And did their presentation. It's an installation of a new water and sewer services and that's kind of at our request. So what we've been doing is asking for either new construction or significant renovation to a home. If the Public Works Sewer and Water Department decides that that's an old, really old connection.
Right.
Some of them are very old lead water connections, so we're getting those replaced, which is, which is a good, smart program to have.
Sure.
Most of our problems, that Ernie will note this, are with our sewer and water connections with the homes. So this'll be a nice, nice fix. We would, I would support that, that hardship waiver. And what that is, is a road opening of a road that's under moratorium.
Right.
Fiscal grant cycle twenty, or July one, twenty twenty-one. This is for the, applications for a fiscal grant. Yeah, alcohol and drug abuse established by the municipal, this is the municipal alliance.
The alliance, right. Every year.
Yep, we do that every year. Three seventy-six is contract for professional services, Mr. Timothy McGuire will be awarding that this evening.
That's not really what it is.
It's amending it for, um...
It's amending, and I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah, it's amending.
We're just amending.
I just don't want the public to be confused. That's, that's amending it concerning the authorization for litigation matters.
Oh, gotcha, right, and we knew that, we knew that coming in.
Yes.
Yes, alright, thank you. I was just reading the first page of it and recognized that that was for that. So that's three seventy-six. Three seventy-seven is authorizing the mayor, under agreement with Mayor Health Administration through Davis Vision, for eye care benefits. Okay. Three seventy-eight, refund K Richmond Ice Cream for their license. For Kevin Richmond, in the amount of twenty dollars for surrendering his ice cream peddling badge. That's nice, we get them back.
Take that out, make it next.
Yeah, well, it, it, it came about because they were losing them. So if they know they get twenty bucks back when they turn it back in, it's the second one I think we've had, right?
This is the third one.
Third one, okay, I know we've had at least two. This would at least be the second one. So that's three seventy. Three seventy-nine is requesting approval of special items of revenue and appropriation. Al, is this municipal aid program, is that something with you? Oh, this is with Wellington Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the paving and reconstruction of Wellington Avenue. Let's see, I'm going through this thing again. I was reading it yesterday. It's hard to read on a phone on the plane. So it's a grant, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Correct.
And this is Wellington Pass Burke, pass, from...
From, uh, the end to...
This is out, Swatmore West, I'm sorry, that's the other one we applied for, for Dorset Ave.
Dorset Ave.
Yeah. So this is out between the school and Swathmore Avenue as it loops around there, correct? Okay. And we just did a bunch of work out there anticipating getting this work done. Good.
Yeah, it's great.
Three eighty is, Jersey authorizing waiver of fees for the application for special events. And they're mostly, they're nonprofit type things, Ventnor Parade, I'm looking at or Ventnor, Retner Events. Going through, just looking at them briefly. And most of them are our own events.
They are, yeah, and anything that wants to be, that needs to, they would have to come to us to get a waiver for the three of us.
Okay.
So these are all city sponsored events.
Okay. Resolution three eighty-one, authorize emergency repairs of Atlantic Avenue. Traffic signal system not to exceed four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, seventy-five cents.
This, this was two emergency repairs?
Yep.
Two separate emergency repairs on the traffic signal. One, one of our foxes blew over during the windstorm. We needed to replace the bottom half and the other was an excavation that had an unmarked, under a conduit.
Yeah. This was just, this past October. And in November was the windstorm, yeah. So emergency repairs there. Transfer of funds, this is yours now, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's just transfers, just normal transfers between budget lines.
Okay.
Cover costs.
Gotcha. So it looks like nothing changes in the budget, just moves it, transfer from one place to the other.
Yep.
Gotcha. That was resolution three eighty-two. And then resolution three eighty-three is, let's see, also body armor replacement program, three thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Federal grant we've received money for.
Okay.
So we have to appropriate it.
Gotcha. It's good stuff. And, let's see, authorizing the purchase, this is resolution three eighty-four, excuse me. Twenty twenty Ford F-150, low roof cargo van, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars under state contract. Ed, that's van for...
For our water meter.
Right, that's the water meter truck we spoke about, yep.
It was authorized in one of two thousand and seventeen.
Yep.
And the current water meter vehicle will be passed down to pump operators.
Okay, pump operators' vehicles done. Goes to the scrapyard. I think Salty drove that thirty years ago when I first met him. Same truck. Looks like we're, resolution three eighty-five, which is reclassifying Michael Cianci from meter worker one to water meter repairer to a pumping, to a pumping station operator with the job two laborer effective December fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
So Michael has transitioned into the pump operating role.
Okay.
And his title has never changed, meter worker one slash water meter repairer.
So this is part of what we talked about with Cindy going through these and getting, getting people in the right civil service title, which is good.
Exactly.
She's going, almost going, you know, she's working her way through the staff to get that done, it's great.
And is there a couple of these tonight or no?
Just the ones.
This one, okay, because I know we've had, we've discussed several of these coming through, so we'll be seeing these coming up in the future, I'm assuming?
Yes.
It actually saves us, they may get a little bump now into that title, but they're not working out of title or we have to pay them more. Right. Three eighty-six, resolution three eighty-six, hiring of employees for city of Ventnor. Brian Nolan is a full-time Public Works Laborer one effective one-one, twenty twenty.
And Mr. Van Ed is to fill an agency.
Right.
But one, this kind of year, resigned.
Resigned, okay, good. And we've ran, and Brian's worked for us the last two summers?
That's correct, and has been continuing to work now this fall.
Good, good. It's good to get some young, young guys in there.
Sure.
It's good stuff.
Keep the complexion of it.
Bill, this one's yours, no, this is Bill, Bill's not here. Bill's still celebrating that Eagles overtime win.
Yeah, he was there.
In fact, I know, I saw the pictures. Tax abatement for three oh three North Cornwall Avenue in the amount, I'm not seeing it, where is it? For Dwayne Howke, it's not showing an amount, which is odd, isn't it?
No, there's actually a spreadsheet, he, he does.
Yeah, we looked at that. It's a percentage.
Oh, a percentage one, okay, oh, yeah, it's, it's the, yep.
Seventy percent.
Gotcha. Yeah, there's the, there it is there, so it's all broken down. Good, that was a new home construction, abatement program. Resolution three eighty-eight, looks like another tax abatement for three oh four North Dorset. Again, that's part of the abatement, abatement agreement. And this has actually been a pretty good program to encourage people to build new homes.
Right, oh, absolutely.
Here, here in Ventnor.
I, I hear it all the time, that's, that's part of the drivers and they want to make sure they get it, they get it done.
Yep. Resolution three eighty-nine is, contract vendors, contracting units pursuant to NJSA, all that. Al, this is, this one is you.
This is required that we, and we list the state contract vendors that we use throughout the year.
So this is that list, okay.
Yes.
Good. Three ninety, we're almost done. Refund for water sewer overpayment, amount of one, whoa, thousand, seventeen hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. That was a big overpayment. What does that do? Okay, so that's an overpayment, we're gonna refund that. And resolution three ninety-one is Mathis Construction, this is for drainage improvements to Marshall Avenue and Oxford Avenue in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents to Mathis Construction of Little Lake Harbor. We have experience with them, they did Swathmore's drainage program there, right?
Uh, that is, they're dealing with Newport Avenue.
Okay.
Drainage project currently. They also did Burke Avenue, two years ago, I mean.
Yep, and they've done good workforce.
They've done fine workforce, but this was very good bidding, four bidders, and I think the first three were twenty thousand dollars each other.
Yeah, they were. Alright, so we'll be awarding that to them. Yeah, there was four bidders, you had Mathis, Arthur Henry, West Bay, I've not heard of them, and Coastline Construction, I'm familiar with them. And the last one, three ninety-two, is another tax abatement agreement for eighteen South Rossborough Avenue. That's it for the resolution, any questions on those?
I do want to circle back just to take a minute because I think we, it's not my department, but on three seventy-nine, just to, just to realize that, and take, that we're fortunate to get that, that amount. We're talking about two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars of a very competitive bid, six hundred and sixty-one applications for the money that was supported by the gas tax in the state of New Jersey. So I just thought it's, it's not something that we get, it's, that's the kind of thing.
Not everybody gets it.
Right.
Jim Vitella does great work for us getting grants. He gets a lot of grants that he applies for. I don't know how he keeps them all straight because he represents a lot of different municipalities.
Right.
But he's been doing work for us and that's, that's great.
Yeah.
And I think, Ed, you helped him with that, because you put together the specs on the road.
There's so many of them, it's hard to...
We do apply for a lot of money.
Well, thanks for that, appreciate it.
No, thanks for bringing that up, Tim, that's...
I think we kind of glossed over it, but it's remarkable.
Yeah.
If you look at this, how much, how competitive that would be for the state for that kind of funding, to get our piece of it.
Right, it is, all those grants are so competitive now, that, that's, that's good news. Alright, so after that, we'll go into bills and payroll. We'll have discussion items, I think we have a few here, right? US Army Corps of Engineers, which I did not get to review that, so I apologize. Ed, did they send this to you?
I, I can speak to that. If you, Commissioner Langria, Commissioner Kriebel, if you remember, the Army Corps approached us a while ago about doing a bulkhead study.
Right, right.
And part of the deal was we have to give them money upfront, and there was a clause in the contract that said it could be canceled for any reason upon thirty days' notice. So we wrote to them and said, well, we can't sign that contract, work can be canceled within thirty days' notice after we give you money.
Right.
And they then advised as well, and that's going to be considered a significant change, and in order to change that, we have to send it up to the chain of command, so to speak, et cetera, et cetera.
I remember that conversation, yeah.
And, and our response was, okay, do that. Well, apparently that wasn't done, and just recently Maria has been contacted by the Army Corps saying, hey, are you folks still interested? And I said, we'll put it on the agenda, and I, my guess is they're still interested, subject to that language being changed, we'll put it on the agenda and we can discuss it. So that's why that item is on there.
There was a significant amount of money we had to put up.
I, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For the shit, for the study.
For the study.
Right.
Yeah. So, and, and my recollection, and this is how this was explained to me, before the dunes were built by the Army Corps, they started a study on those dunes back in the eighties. So it takes ten, fifteen, they did, the Army Corps didn't come in here and build dunes till the early two thousands.
Right.
And that was on Absekin Island. And I guess they did them down in Ocean City and all these other places too, but I know in Ventnor, they, they started to build them in early two thousands. So that's how long it takes these, the Army Corps, the federal government to do these studies. So this wouldn't show any results for many years down the road, but it's something I think we need to, we need to know about.
Well, this would be for the bulkheads along the back bay.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm saying, that's how the dune project started, was many years ago, doing the research, so they're, they're looking to start that in the back bays now. You know, some of the studies that they, and if you went to the public meeting where they talked about solutions, they had it over to our, we hosted it for them. Some of the solutions are pretty extreme, that they're talking about doing. You know, ten-foot-high concrete walls along the bulkhead, you know, taller than the bulkhead we have now. Which I hope isn't the, the answer, because then you have no access to the bay. That was an extreme that they showed that could, that could work. They also showed this huge tidal dam that would go on the Absekin inlet. On one side on Brigantine, one side on Atlantic City, and you would close the inlet during storms. They have one over in, in the Netherlands.
Right. That would be, I'd be, I'd be impressed if to see if they could pull that off, quite honestly.
Billions of dollars to put this thing in, I don't know where that, that's coming from, but, but they've done it elsewhere in the world and it seems to, to help, but it's, you'd have to close off all the inlets. Can't just close off one.
Right.
You have to go down and close off, you know, Ocean City inlet like the same way. So it, it's something I think we need to participate in to know what, what the results are.
Is that, is that the caveat? We have to participate in it?
Well, if, if they don't get the participation, they won't do the study.
Right.
Right.
What about Margate and Atlantic City?
I just need to know if we should tell them, yes, we're still interested?
Yeah, we are, I would say yes.
Yeah.
That, that would be my, my suggestion.
Okay. What about Margate? I mean, we can't, isn't it, isn't it, isn't it a conversation that we have with the whole entire island?
They, they have had that conversation. We can certainly ask, I mean, this isn't saying we're gonna sign it.
I understand.
We're gonna go back, yes, we're still interested, we need to see what happens with this one clause.
Yeah.
Right, absolutely, yes.
If they can say, oh, here, we, here's our three hundred K, and six months later they say, oh, we're not doing it anymore, well, where's my money?
Right.
Exactly.
You know, it's not...
And I will, they define the scope of the project, so I will ask them about Margate, but I think...
It's the whole island, it's the whole back bay.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. So that was our portion of it.
Yeah, I know they already had something in line for Jackson Avenue to, and part of Ventnor Avenue, and part of Ventnor, right?
Yeah, yeah, so let, maybe we'll get back, when they come back with that, we'll look at it again, because I forget the parameters of it at this point, but we're still interested in participating if certain things are, are provided to us.
Yeah, absolutely. And then there's one eleven South Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
That property was placed on there and subsequent, there were emails that went back and forth. That was just someone wanting to know, an adjacent property owner wanting to know if the city would be interested in selling them land. Since that was placed on there, I've gotten the general idea that the answer to that question is yes. So I just want to make sure that is yes. I will have them do a title report and legal description of the property they wish to purchase, and we'll take it from there.
I think they have that already, she should get that pretty quick. And just to be very clear what this is, this is an area where there's bulkhead on municipal property, and they own the property immediately adjacent to it. They want to replace the bulkhead and you, and use that property to do it. And it makes perfect, they're gonna maintain the bulkhead, do all that stuff, Ed was in on this.
I just wanted to make sure, make sure that you saw the most recent email from Mr. Goldstein, which indicated that, hey, once we get this land, what we were planning to build is by right.
Correct.
Okay.
It'll, it'll, it removes variances for the home they want to build there.
That's fine.
Yep, I did see that.
So it sounds like a win.
Exactly, they're gonna pay us.
If it's by right, right?
Yeah, well, plus they're gonna pay us to maintain that bulkhead, it's, it's ocean frontage.
Right.
Bulkhead.
Yeah, I saw it on the, good.
Not, not bayfront.
Great.
So that's a good...
And there's no loss to public land there, that's...
Correct.
It's...
Correct. Public, it's behind their home.
Public access, right.
Yeah, it's behind their home. It's one of those areas that has the, the jog deep back, you know, on the back beach.
Right.
So, we have no executive session, and there's sunshine special, what is this for, please?
Oh, that, I just wanted to do, you to clarify tonight definitely that you put on the record that we're gonna cancel the twenty-six meetings.
Okay.
And that we're gonna advertise that our, our first meeting for January will be January ninth.
Okay. Do I need to read this now?
Oh, you, I mean, we just said it, if you would like, you know.
Alright, so the, the second meeting in December, we are not gonna have that meeting, it's, it falls Christmas week. We're gonna have our twenty twenty reorganizational meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty at five thirty PM, Ventnor City Commission Chambers, second floor, six oh two Atlantic Avenue, formal action will be taken.
Yes, and I'll advertise that into the press.
Okay, good. And, oh, that's the second, if that was first, that would have been...
Oh, sorry, I mixed up, sorry.
Alright, and then we'll do, and then there's the bills and payroll stuff. Alright, so we're gonna open it up to the public for any items that we've previously discussed. We welcome your participation, please come forward, state your name, and give us your comments. I get a motion to open the public?
Motion to open the public.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're open to the public, anybody wishes to speak, please come up, talk about the items we've spoken about in our, our workshop. Seeing no one jumping out of their chair, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ken was jumping up, little slow reaction, Mr. Ross. Motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting?
Motion to close workshop portion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll call to order the regular portion of our meeting, and we'll open the regular portion of the meeting, so we'll do that. We don't need a vote on that, correct?
No, no, we're good.
So we'll need a motion to approve the minutes from October tenth, October twenty-fourth, and November fourteenth, all as one item?
Motion to approve minutes as described?
Second, roll call please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. We have no ordinance introduction as we spoke about, we do have a public hearing on ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero twenty-two. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of sixty-five ten to twelve Ventnor Avenue in the city of Ventnor City, Atlantic County, state of New Jersey. I have a motion to open the public hearing on the ordinance.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty nineteen, zero, two, two.
A second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So the, this hearing is open to the public on the purchase, the city's purchase of sixty-five ten to twelve Ventnor Avenue. Anybody wishing a comment, please step forward. Ken? Mr. Ross?
Kenneth Ross, one twenty-three North Swathmore Avenue in South Beach.
I like that.
So be, not nobe.
I like it.
Wow, alright.
First of all, congratulations on a terrific holiday parade, by the way.
I heard it was great.
It possibly could have used a bit more flow control. There were groupings of people and then vast quantities of open space and then other groupings of people.
That was for you to come out and dance. That was for participants to come out and just jump in.
Having participated in the lengthy veterans parade on the boardwalk in Atlantic City, which is one gigantic accordion going in and out, I know the problems of that particular parade, but otherwise, reaction has been wonderful, it's great. Do it again next year with better flow control.
Better flow control.
I'm interested in precedent for the proposed purchase of this property.
Okay.
Can you name other properties that have been purchased by the city from the private owner? Properties that are not an immediate safety hazard to the community? Properties for which the current owner presumably is still paying taxes on at least the land value? Has this occurred before, and if so, where, and also why?
So I'm not sure, in our tenure, we have not, we've not purchased something like this. It came to our attention from the owner of the property that someone had approached him to use the property, that's something that we didn't support. So we thought it was better for us to, to step in and purchase that property for, for open space, for now. We are not going to take county open space money on it. We could do that, pardon me, we could do that, but that would restrict the land forever to be in, in open space. So we'd rather have the option down the road, that if someone came to us with a really good project, we would rather do that. I'm really not willing at this time until the sale's done to, to tell you what that use was going to be, but it was something that, that I didn't support, nor did Commissioner Kriebel, nor did the mayor.
And I, I can also add that the purchase of property by municipality is specifically authorized by state statute, the local lands and buildings law.
Sure.
I know many communities have purchased property, I'm pretty sure that Ventnor has, I just can't off the top of my head think of one right now. But it, it happens.
Okay.
It was definitely a concern of ours taking a property off of the tax rolls.
That's the concern of the citizenry too.
And, and it very well should be, and, and I appreciate you bringing it up, I'm glad someone came here and didn't continue the, the discussion on other venues that has occurred.
Which continue as we speak, the citizenry.
It does, and they're uninformed and you came here to get the right answer, and I appreciate that. So we've had some, right now the idea is for a pocket park. If you look next, if you've been to Ocean City, immediately adjacent to their city hall, they purchased the land right there and they created a little pocket park, either the library or city hall. Roger McLaren sent it to me. It's a great little park, it's very narrow.
Right.
And it goes back between an alley and one of the main streets there.
Right.
So that's what we're, we're looking at right now for the, for the use of the property. The, the, the fallacy that is out there is that we paid its assessed value. That's just wrong. It's just not appropriate, it's not, not even close.
It's not correct.
Incorrect information, so...
And I guess the question, my other question is, why the rush? I mean, that building was torn down only five months ago.
Because there was a buyer.
Okay, there's a buyer whose use.
We did not.
You don't see in the best interest of the city.
Most definitely not in the best interests of our city.
But there's precedent also in other areas. I mean, the, we've got an entire city block of the, it's not something that we purchased, but it's an entire city block where the tennis courts are. That property is not, the ta- is, we don't get the tax benefit of those, of those, and of, of that square footage, or the parks that are out in, uh, Ventnor Heights. So I mean, the, the underlying philosophies there, this just happens to be new for our tenure.
Yeah, if you're buying them for a municipal purpose, and, or you're buying them for eminent domain and a city benefit purpose, no question, absolutely.
Well, I, I think the open space will be a city benefit. I mean, it's a nice little green pocket park that we're gonna create there.
Well, Lance, have you looked at that open space in the light of day and looked at the three-story building next to it and the crumbling stairways and the trash cans that make it look like a South Bronx tenement?
So we're, we're working.
Are you gonna wanna sit in seats there and with a tree above you and read a book with that in the distance?
You're, you're right, there's challenges. I was there today for that exact same reason. I walked it, and it's deep and it's high on both sides, but if you spend some time and, and you probably have, like in Philadelphia or New York City, it is a part of urban change where those pocket parks can ha- can include things like, um, can include things like, uh, seating and, um, other ven- other, uh, even, um, uh, I think the, the, the kids in the, I, I've, I've spoken to some kids in, in the high school that are actually, um, asked them ideas about that park, and, um, they would like to see things like, uh, places for them to use Wi-Fi or, um, have, have, uh, chess boards there, things like that. Uh, I, I think it, it's, it's a place for people to, to, it's proven a place that would be a draw to our downtowns where right now we have a lot, we still have a lot of empty storefronts.
So would the larger space across the street next to Sapporo's.
But that's not a.
Right, that's privately owned, that's proof for.
Privately owned, taxes are being paid.
Yep.
And it's larger, yeah.
So I'm glad you brought up the high school students. So as I'm driving home from work Friday afternoon, ready, almost ready to get out of town, I got a call from Drew Holmes. Drew Holmes is the Autocat instructor at ACIT. He said, Lance, hey, you got any projects for me, for my kids? He's senior capstone for high school kids.
ACIT?
AC, at ACIT, yeah. So I said, yeah, I kinda do.
Right.
I threw the park out.
Imagine a well-lit stage back there for some, for you, where that, that you could use for a concert, and tables and landscaped and, and, and yeah, it would be a little bit of a cove, and it's, but if it was well-lit, so you could see from front to back, and it offer people a place to sit and bring food, uh, or to have lunch and have Wi-Fi access. It's not a bad, it's not a bad.
That's a lot of what-ifs.
Yeah.
And a lot of expense on the city to prepare all that and build all that, and maintain all that. You're gonna call a cor- a corps of engineer and see if they'll take that twelve, that ten-foot wall up there and make it a thirty-foot wall.
Yeah.
And block off twenty-five fourteen or something like that.
I wouldn't wanna block it off. I wanna keep it as open space. Keep it as a little pocket.
I mean, on the side, on the ugly side.
Right, right. No, we, we're gonna work with that property owner to maintain that area, get them to clean it up some. Uh, but the idea of having students give us design ideas.
It's a great idea.
Which I just thought was, was fun. I've done it with, with his other classes with some other projects that I've been involved with, both in Atlantic City and, and outside the city. So that's something we're gonna, we're gonna have those guys have a project, and they'll come here and present it to us.
Great.
Take the ideas and see what, see what comes of it.
I'm also concerned that, uh, with that pocket park idea being, to a great extent, closed off from visible view from police cars, for example. There's a big three-story building on one side, there's the two-story building kind of entunneling that whole area on the other side. There's no access off of an alley. You talked about a Ocean City Park that was between a street and an alley. This is not that, 'cause there's no alley in back. It's.
Right. It would be fenced off.
There's no accessibility in the back.
It would be fenced off.
So the only eyes that might be on this park, uh, my concern is that a pocket park would become a needle park, like they have in Amsterdam.
Right.
And a closed-off sort of partially invisible space cries out for nefarious actions.
Always gonna have to be law enforcement involved with any public space that we, that the city owns, as there is now. So there's, there's certainly mechanisms that our, our police department, our fire department will look at as part of the design of the property. Cameras could be an option, that, that there's something that, that we are looking at cameras around city hall and other public places that the city owns, the pier, uh, tennis courts, all those areas, the library and the, the recreational fields behind, recreational areas behind there. Um, we wanna tie all them into a camera system that PD can monitor.
It's actually made it more safe, and the, the, the fire escapes on the Margate side of that empty lot were not sufficient, and they had to be repaired and brought up to code as a result of the, um, the, the exposure now and the fire that took place.
But their trash cans are still gonna be in their side of the alley of this particular pocket park, so.
We can block that off with either landscaping or fencing or whatever we can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it certainly challenges there, certainly challenges there, um, but we think this is, is, is a good option for the community.
Uh, I'm, I and others are concerned about the lacks of tax, the, the loss of tax dollars.
Okay.
Well, uh, but, uh, if you can assure us that, uh, your evaluation of what was going to be the proposed use of that park uh, necessitates this action, then, oh yeah, we'll trust you on that.
Well, uh, when, when the sale is complete, then, then I will, we will make that public, as well as, I mean, we, we know what we're, we assessed it as. We got our, not assessed, we got our, uh, appraised value, and that's what we're paying, the appraised value, which is significantly less than the assessed.
Okay. Uh, and I have to ask this, neither of you nor Beth have any financial interest in the guy who currently owns the property, I presume?
None at all, none at all.
None whatsoever.
You're gonna assure us of that?
I can, I can swear to it, assure you of it. I have, the owner's DJ Gluck, he's a realtor, he owns a lot of property in the city. I have no connection to the gentleman. I know him 'cause he's, he lives in Margate.
Right.
But I have no connection to the gentleman.
No. No, we're, we're, we're speaking on behalf of the city as a, elected officials for this type of a project. It's not, and it has no personal gain whatsoever.
Okay. And, and the haste of doing this relates to the proposed use that this other buyer, okay?
He has reached out to us and said that entity has reached out to him multiple times during this process.
Okay.
And Mr. McGuire, you can, 'cause he's called you.
Is that fair?
That, that, that is a true and accurate statement. And in fact, I'm sitting here wondering out loud if the other entity with, that wished to, wished to purchase that possibly could have applied for a tax exemption. So the fact that.
Right.
There wouldn't be any tax revenue generated at that property.
Absolutely.
Would, would have been the same if the other entity had purchased it.
Right.
Which, in the view of the commissioners, would have been a much worse scenario for the city of Ventnor and its residents.
And the guy has not had other bidders on the property, other than that one that you know of, or?
That's the only one we know of.
Okay.
So to Tim's point, the tax effect would have been lost regardless.
Right, so wash, okay.
And, and it's funny, and, and you bring up a good point, Tim. The, there's another pocket park being designed, was approved already by the planning board up in the North Beach area. They have applied for tax exemption, so they will not be paying taxes on that property.
It's a privately owned.
Private, it'll be a private park that you'll have to pay to get into.
Right.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, that's actually more egregious because it'll be fenced off, you'll have a code and a gate, and you'll have to pay a membership.
Absolutely.
From what I understand. And it's gonna be tax exempt. So in my opinion.
Wow.
What we're doing is opening up a pocket park to the public with no provisos.
Right.
That's those, that's those North Beach people. We're not that way down the South.
Actually, he's not. He's not someone who even lives in North Beach.
But it's that, it's, it's, it's public. It's, it was on the planning board, the, the memor- memory park, I think it's called?
It's named for someone. I don't, I don't know the particular name. I apologize for that, but, I mean, they, they have applied through the DEP to be tax exempt for the upcoming year. They will not be granted that tax exemption because they didn't meet the requirements. As of October first of this year, they had to have the improvements done and the park up and operating, and they would have gotten tax exemption for 2020. They planned to build it in the next eighteen, or less than eighteen months.
Here's something that just occurred to me.
Probably twice as big, so the tax effect is, is much more.
Easily.
If before you implement your plans for pocket park, a buyer comes along and asks, can I buy that from the city? Would you sell it?
Depending on the use.
Yeah.
That, that's why we didn't wanna use.
Use and price.
Open space money from, from either Green Acres or, uh.
Yeah, 'cause then you're locked in.
Then we're, then we're tied to it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. I appreciate you coming out. Anyone else wanna speak on that ordinance? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we've got.
Adoption.
Ordinance adoption. Need a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-022, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of sixty-five, ten to twelve Ventnor Avenue.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2019-022.
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Okay, move forward. Then we have, I need a motion to adopt resolutions 2019-372 through 392 by consent.
Motion to adopt resolutions as described.
Second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Okay. Al, can you go through our bills and payroll, please?
Yes, uh, the payroll for last payroll this past is five hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and eighty cents. And the bill list for December seventh through December seventh, eight million, nine forty-three, eight oh seven, forty-nine.
Excuse me, and you have one more bills. I mean, excuse me, one more payroll.
One more payroll from eleven-three to eleven-sixty.
Oh, yeah, uh, I don't have that.
Okay, and the amount of four hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Thank you. Motion, please?
Motion to approve bills and payroll as described.
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Any announcements, safety report?
Nope.
Commissioners reports? I don't really have anything at this time. Um, I know, I was gonna talk a little bit about the parade and thank Shelley, I mean.
Yeah.
I was, I apologize, I was not here. I had an opportunity to, uh, avail myself of, of risking life and limb skiing. So if you saw the stuff, it was risk of life and limb.
So, Mr. Ross, see, I think he, he mentioned it as well, um, uh, it was eighty specific individual units. There was a little bit of a holdup with a, one of the limos had some mechanical issues in the beginning, which I think, like you said, spread out the, the path a little bit, but it was well-attended, uh, as a result of, and we'll, we'll, we'll thank her, uh, thanked her personally, and we'll thank her again, but, uh, lots of meetings, lots of phone calls, lots of coordination by Shelley and her team, uh, as long, as, as well as the police and fire. Was a, was a, very much a, a group effort, but she works all, she starts planning it.
She's already for next year.
She has, uh, plans on having a light show against the side, wants to have, uh, against the side of the building, and I, I asked her if she ever thinks small, and no.
No, she does a phenomenal job for this community.
Yeah, and I remember just fo- four short years ago where the parade was over in a matter of minutes, so now it, it has become like something that's really.
Really become something. And to get, you have, what, five marching bands or something like that in it?
Very much thanks to her, yeah.
So thanks, thanks to Shelley, DeRazo, and her team. Um, I know PD and Fire Department were there putting everything out, you know, helping.
And, and Public Works.
And Public Works, too, that's right.
Big time.
Don't forget about that. Um.
And, and then.
There'll be a public comment right at the end, Ken. I see your hand.
The only, the only other thing I would just say is that, uh, is, and you can all see it going up, is that the, um, the walls of the, of Station Two are going up.
Yes.
And it's happening quickly. There's, um, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, it's gonna, they'll start welding the, the floors in and, um, starting the, the, the rest of the structure soon, so the panels are almost all up.
Pretty cool how it's going together. It's like a huge life-size erector set.
Yep, and then they get acid washed, and, you know, they're all formed at different times, so some of the colors, we talked about that, then, uh, bringing it up to speed as it cures, so we're staying on top of them as far as quality control.
Good. Not too much else for me, Commissioner Reports, um, comments. I mean, we're working through the lighting on the streets with Atlantic Electric, getting the rest of the, the ornaments lit up. Um, was the parade route pretty much lit, though? That they, they got those done?
Pretty much. There's, there's nine, nine locations, but five of them are out of doors, so there's only, there's only.
Okay. So we had, just have to get them to electrify those poles. Okay, good. I wanna tell a brief story from out. So I met this couple out in Utah. They were building their house last winter. Their snow removal for their house, so the contractors could work there. It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I said, that's less than my municipal budget for snow removal. It's not?
No, 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 it is.
It is.
It was like, the lady hit me with her ski pole.
It is less.
Two hundred and fifty grand, just so you could build your house.
Oh, my gosh.
It's crazy. Crazy, but it was.
It's all relative, I guess.
All relative, exactly. Um, with that, we'll end the Commissioner's Reports. Um, who you got? Oh, thank you. She keeps us on, on track. So this is our last meeting before the holidays.
Okay.
So we wanna sh- wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and, and enjoy the New Year. Um, with that, we'll open it up to the public. We have a motion to open the public?
Motion to open the public.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ken, you had something?
On the parade again, um, from my vantage point in front of sixty-five, ten dash twelve Ventnor Avenue, where I was standing.
Doing reconnaissance work.
Yes. Hey, multitasking here.
That's good.
Uh, some of the groups and floats coming down were unidentifiable. I'm thinking of the Rose Bowl Parade where there's a big band coming and there's two people carrying a banner that says, Dear Schwartz High School or something like that.
Right.
Consider adding, adding that for next year.
Sure.
So we all know, who is that?
I think Shelley needs a coordinator.
There's a, there's a position open for a volunteer.
I'll do it.
All right.
All right, we will give her.
Oh, trust me, she'll, she'll, she will bring you into the fold.
Yes, she will.
And, uh.
It was nice knowing you because you're.
And also was, because the parade was on December seventh, it was allegedly to honor veterans, uh, and yes, there were a few there, but again, that was not identified well.
Okay.
As a pain to veterans, and I would like to, being in the BFW and American Legion, would like to have seen more identification on that particular regard. Otherwise.
Yeah, I know it was all on, it was all on the social media and all the posts, but you're right.
But not necessarily the parade itself, but.
Right.
I think they had a good number of, of vets walking.
We did. We had a vet from, from every, the branch of the, of the, of the forces, and then, um.
Coast Guard, Color Guard.
They were the, they were the, um, the grand marshals. We had a luncheon with all of them prior to the, for the parade, but you're right, they could have, could have, uh, it, it's, really is a pretty tight budget. I, you know, so adding more banners and things like that have to be, have to be, it's very carefully.
Just imagine what the parade will be five and ten years from now.
Agreed. I like it.
But thank you.
Macy's eat your heart out, you know?
Right. Get sponsors for the, the banners.
Yeah.
You didn't ask me as a veteran to march.
We'll get your information. We'll get you, we'll, yeah, I know, absolutely.
No, you put your hand up. You volunteered. We're giving your name.
Before you leave, get, let me get your number and an email, and I'll.
Be careful what you ask for. This is on TV, so Georgiana can see that you put your hand up.
Yep.
You can watch this. Okay, anyone else in the public? Motion to close, please?
Motion to close, public comment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.